Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's specially called meeting for Monday, September 27, 2021. The meeting has been called to order. The board has just reconvened into open session, and I would ask that all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And board members, we will need to amend the agenda to add an action item, so may I have a motion to add an action item to the September 27, 2021 specially called meeting agenda to approve the administrative recommendation as presented in closed session.
So move.
Okay. I'll take Ms. Carpenter and Ms. Blackwell on the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And we will move to 6.01, which is Board Chair Comments. We know that there has been a lot of confusion within the community and our system regarding quarantine and contact tracing and some of the COVID-19 update reports that have come out, so we felt that it was very important in order to make some clarification statements and to be a little bit more transparent on what's going on, especially with some of our surrounding counties, some things that have taken place, to call this meeting and to share that with the general public, with the viewing audience, and with our staff as well, and to just do a good meeting that would get a lot of information out there to a lot of people at one time. So with that being said, I will turn it over to Dr. Kapiki for 7.01 for our COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Mrs. Grimsley. Right now, I'm going to have John Basile come up to the microphone and give the board the most recent updates on our positives or quarantines and to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Basile.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thanks for having me tonight.
Are you keyed up? Okay, great. Thanks.
I am. Yes, I'm excited to be here with you guys, if that's what you mean by keyed up, and the mic is on as well, so either way. Okay, so great. So I wanted to share briefly with you, on the screen right now, I believe you can see the four-week trend that tells us what's been going on with our COVID numbers in terms of positivity and quarantines since the start of the school year, right? So if you look at that, you have a little table in the upper right-hand corner, but you also have kind of this trend line. And what I'd like to bring your attention to is that if you look over the last three weeks, we've had a significant drop in the number of quarantines we've experienced. You can see that we have, that number of quarantines that were reported on August 30th were almost 1,100, whereas the numbers that we're putting out today, that should be on the report board today, should be close to 400. So that's a significant drop. You'll also notice the blue line. The blue line tells you the total number of COVID-positive cases that are confirmed in our district. And again, if you look in the first two or three weeks, we have something of a peak, and now we're where we peaked at 296, and now we've come back down to 160 is the number that we have for this week. And then underneath that, if you're, like, a little bit more granular data, it sort of breaks it down by the various levels of high school, middle school, elementary, and sort of our special programs like PLC and Mary Frances Wall are sort of smaller environments. One thing, sorry, folks, there's a, there's an error on the, there is an, I'm going to have to get this corrected for you all. There's an error on one of the cells for quarantine where it says the number, and it says 0% of our cases became positive. In fact, we had 30 cases that became positive of our 160 for this week, and that's about, that's not quite 20%, that's 19%. It looks like it's showing up as zero on your screens, and I'll make sure that we correct that for you. Larry, can we go to the next slide? So this has just given you a sense of the community positivity numbers over the last, you know, well, this is a pretty good composite vision, but what I'd like you to look is sort of the last two months. You can see that at the end of June, the slope of that line for the positive cases is very aggressive. You can see it rises very quickly, right, over a short time period. But what you'll see there is right around the time that school started, it, you'll see that yellow line, that yellow pointy line peaks in late August at about 15.6%. And then it starts to drop, as you can see, it drops at a rate of about 1% plus per week. So you can see it's a pretty steep decline. At the community level, we're seeing that the current positivity rate is 11.1%, which is down significantly from the 15.6% peak right at the start of the school year. I just think it's important that you guys, that you all, as decision-makers, have that information so that you are able to see what the trends look like in the community within our schools. And those were the two slides I was prepared to share with you today. What else can I tell you, ladies and gentlemen of the board?
Okay, John, so are you going to introduce from the Health Department and atrium to assist you, or are you going to start with the question and answers? Just are you going to start with that piece of it?
So, so how about I start? And if there's something I can, I can help you with, great, but I know that you all had some questions.
Okay, so I'll tell you what, how about this? I'll start with what we didn't really finish with the information last meeting that we didn't have updated, and maybe then you can fill that piece in, and then if we need to...
Sure.
Okay. So we did not have the number of quarantines that had turned positive.
Okay. So I think what we just said for this week, that number was 30 out of 160, I'm sorry, 30 cases turned positive out of 160 positives. So what that means is that of our 160 that are going to be on our dashboard today, the positive cases, 30 of them were home on quarantine during the typical two-week quarantine period. Sure, oh, yes, Larry, would you mind going back to the other slide? Thank you. And so as you think about that in terms of, if you, if you think about that in terms of the number of, the percentage of positive cases, of the positive cases, that's nearly 20%. If you think of that in terms of the number of young people that were quarantined during that time period, it's probably closer to 7 or 8%.
I think what we talked about that puts this in perspective for the general public based on, so if we said that we have 42 campuses, okay, and then we said we've had 160 positives, correct? Breaking those down to the individual schools, I know you said you would get that out to us, but that equates to, what, three, three positives per school?
So three or four positive cases per school. It probably doesn't fit that way because you have some campuses like Mary Frances Wall that are very small, and some campuses that are like Cox Mill High School that are among us, right? So...
I think it's really important for the general public and, you know, for our community to hear, we hear all these numbers, but they get so convoluted, you know, that we have so much information that the board has to take into consideration, and then the community hears us, you know, talk about it, discuss it, and then it gets a little more cumbersome. But I think just breaking it down into a week, you know, last week it was this, and this is our positives, and I know that y'all said that the dashboard is updated every Monday?
It is.
Okay. So the general public knows that they can go to that dashboard on our website every Monday and get an up-to-date number on quarantines, positives. That piece of it is really important, and I think that's probably where we've all gotten behind, and not putting that out to the general public.
I understand. So we've, we have been, we have been updating that since the school year started. We have been giving the number of positives, the number of quarantines by school since the school year started. We did not do that over the summer, so the only place that we were late in starting that, if you want to call it that, is when, when it was Wolf Meadow was the only school open and the early colleges. It seems strange to conspicuously just put up two schools, but, but since the school year started proper, we've had that up every, every week without fail.
Just not the number of quarantines that were turned positive.
Oh, so that new piece of data, no, we, we have not included that data.
Right. And can you speak to why that piece is more important and now how we're trying to move forward to lessen the numbers of quarantine and to kind of control that, but actually that may be where you need to invite...
Yeah, it's probably great if I was able to engage some of the folks in the Health Alliance who can talk about that, just so I think the, the community has a sense of, you know, of, you know, why it is we make some of the decisions we do.
Absolutely. Would you like to introduce?
I have a, I'm clarifying.
Okay. Give just one second. Go ahead.
Yeah, John, the numbers where you say quarantines, you have 1,007,81, 494, and then 410. Is that the new quarantines, or is that the total quarantines that we still have? How many kids are out of school?
That's right. That's the total, that's the total number of quarantines during that time period. So it wouldn't be just that week, that, so those would be carryovers for the 14-day period, up to that 14-day period.
So it'll drop off, they drop off?
And then they drop off, right.
Okay, so it's the accurate picture of how many kids are out of school?
It's the most accurate picture that I can, I can give you based on the data that I have, yes.
Thank you.
And John, just to clarify, because that might have been just a little confusing, it's for that week?
That's right.
That time period.
So this is, right, so this is a snapshot of what that looked like on that Friday, on the Friday that closed out that week, right? So, so that's the, that's the number of kids who are in, that were quarantined on that Friday prior to the report being run. If you think about it this way, Monday morning, if we try to run the report on Monday morning, that number's going to be fluid. There's going to be kids coming back, and there's going to be kids quarantined. By close of business Friday, we have a sense of a static, the number's static by that point.
Okay, great. Would you like to invite?
I'd love to invite Mrs. Shewa.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think you've been with us enough times that we all probably know you firsthand, and so does the community.
Well, good.
Ms. Shewa, welcome tonight. Yes, thanks, thanks for having me back. Okay, so, so glad to be here. Before we get started, let me introduce who is here with me, and then we have the questions that you submitted to Dr. Kapiki, and so what we'll do is we'll run through those, and then I'll call them up to talk through their areas of expertise, and so we'll kind of round robin. So it'll be kind of fluid up here if that works for you. But we've got Dr. Russell Suda, who is our medical director at Cabarrus Health Alliance and an OB-GYN, a tremendous physician and also civic leader in the community. We have Dr. Jamari Torres, who is a pediatrician with Cabarrus Health Alliance, and then Tammy Alexander is one of our school nurse supervisors that started with us as a school nurse, so just a tremendous amount of knowledge here with us. All right, so if we could leave this graph up, I think that would be helpful. So first of all, I just really want to acknowledge the hard work from our school nurses, our school teachers, our school administrators, Mr. Basile's, for continuing to collect all of this information to report out, and I just want, you know, to take a minute, I know the line's at the bottom, you don't really see the slope as, as great as maybe we would want to, but everything here is heading in the right direction. So I'd like to start out just by saying what you are doing and the strategies that you have in place are working, and so kudos to the team, kudos to you for collecting this. All right, so like I said, we had a couple of questions and then some comments that came in, so I'm not sure who, who shared what with us, but we'll jump right in. So I really appreciate Dr. Kapiki facilitating getting that as well. So the first question we received are, why are we wearing masks? So we're going to move through these pretty quickly, not to belabor any of the points, but a couple of reasons. So, one, to reduce transmission of COVID-19 in the school setting due to science, and if the science isn't what you would like to follow, then it's also to reduce the number of students we have to exclude, because if we start taking masks off in a classroom, then it opens up who we have to exclude as a close contact. So by having that mask on in the classroom when they're worn, then we, we don't have to contact, we don't have to exclude, so you can see your exclusions here going down. So those are the primary reasons, to prevent transmission and to prevent close contact quarantines in the classroom, okay? So the next question we got, and I think this has been a source of a lot of conversation, and so I am, I'm really thankful that Dr. Suda and Dr. Torres are here with me. Why are we not accepting all rapid test results? So we'll give a little bit of background, just so everybody understands, I think, where that question's coming from, and if we take these questions in a wrong direction, I trust that you'll redirect us. So this is for our close contacts who are symptomatic, so I really want you to, we're only talking about our symptomatic students here, not our asymptomatic, so our symptomatic students. So I will invite Inspector Suda to join us to talk about why a PCR test instead of a rapid test is really the gold standard in terms of bringing back students to school and not excluding them.
Hey, Erin.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you just key up the other mic, too? It might just help, and the both of you can actually stand there together.
Yep.
Well, as much as you can.
There you go.
Greetings to all of you, and thank you for all the hard work you're doing. In medicine, we do screening tests, and screening tests are meant to pick up positives but not have the predictive value of a more definitive test. A good example is a pap smear. We do pap smears to find abnormalities, but they are many times false negatives. Two-thirds of pap smears, you know, turn out to be accurate, the other third inaccurate. And so when we look at the, the rapid test, it's a test that can help us if it's positive, because a positive test is rarely negative, but a negative test is not a definitive answer if you're really trying to keep people who potentially have a very contagious infection out of contact with other people. You need to do something that's more definitive, and that's the PCR test. That's a very, very sophisticated test whereby the, the actual analyte goes into the system and binds to, you know, specifically the RNA of the virus, and then identifies that that virus is definitely there. So if we want to know that the, that the virus is definitely there, that's the test that, that we have to do, even in the face of a, of a screening test that's negative. I'm not sure if that's the answer to, to the question, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions relative to that.
Okay, and Erin, just bear with me, because I am going to give the board members, because it is so much information, I think that's what we all need to do, is just to start with questions.
Yes, and let's let Dr. Torres, since she is a pediatrician in our practice, and she is seeing a lot of our students from our community, also talk about why we have, have gone this route with the PCR test right now for symptomatic. I really want to drill that down for symptomatic close contacts.
Dr. Torres?
Thank you for inviting us and for having us here today, and I have been a mom as well, and I have two children that have gone through our system. One is in fifth grade, so this is not only important to me as a doctor, but also as a mom, because I don't want him to catch this, this disease. That could be lethal. So I see kids every day. Today, I did five different testings, the five different families in the office, and two of them were positive for rapid. Now, rapid tests, just like to echo what Dr. Suda said, rapid helps us a lot, because if it's positive, the false negative, it's very low. Does that make any sense, just in late terms? It's very unlikely that if it's positive, that was an erroneous positive, very unlikely. There's still statistics out there that if you want more information, we're more than happy to send you with the studies that they have come up with. So that helps me, but then if it's negative, and I still am very, very concerned about this kid, I have to send a PCR, because the PCR is what is called the gold standard, very similar to rapid strep. You guys have all had, at some point or another, a throat culture done in your throat because something hurt. So rapid helps us a lot, but if this person or patient or kid, in my case, have had symptoms for a day or two, very, it's very possible that that rapid doesn't have enough bacteria or enough virus, in this case, to test positive. So what do we do? We send a throat culture, and half of the time could be positive, and that is the gold standard for that testing. Now, so that is, that is the reason why we end up doing both. Now, it's a clinical judgment, unfortunately, in all of this, so there are kids that are sent home for sneezing. So if it's been sneezing for five days, and I know that they have allergies, or that I find that on exam, I do a rapid, and I might not send a PCR, because they don't have any other symptoms. Now, obviously, we are all very concerned, and, you know, the, the people are feeling very stressed about this, you don't want to miss cases. We will miss some cases sometimes, just from doing that rapid, but that is the logic between the rapid and the PCR, and why do we do those? I don't know if anybody has any other questions about that, but...
Erin, are you good for board questions now?
Yeah.
Could I just comment?
Sure.
The rapid test is very helpful, because if it's positive, you don't have to wait the one to three days to get that person out of circulation, because while you're waiting for that PCR result, that child or that adult is rapidly contacting other people and potentially spreading the infection. So the rapid test has a very definite role, but you can't, can't put confidence in it if it's negative, especially if the patient's symptomatic.
Okay, I'm going to start with Ms. Adcock. Comments or questions?
Just one question about the PCR test, and I've just not really been real clear on it. So how, what is the number of days it takes you to get that result back?
May I? So it all depends, okay? So it depends on the day of the week that it's done, we have no control over that. Oh, so sorry. It all depends on the day of the week that that child or that family presented. I've seen it now between one to three days. It depends also if it's a holiday for September 4th or the 6th. We had people that didn't get it for five days. That's out of our control once we send it to the lab. But right now, during the week, we're seeing a turnaround between one and three days. We do try to contact the families immediately when we get it, if it's positive or negative, and let them know.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, I have two questions to write off. One of them you may not be able to answer right now, but do you have a percentage rate that you could say you would recommend, that you would say would be a good time that masks maybe would not be needed? You know, 2% or whatever, I mean, that you could recommend that maybe we would not need to wear masks, you know, or do you think we need to keep wearing them all the time?
I'm going to ask you, can you be more specific?
Well, right now, we're at 11.1% positivity rate. Yeah, I'm talking about our positivity rate where we're at, you know, back during the summer, I mean...
Carolyn, I hate to interrupt you, I really do, but can we keep this on the same subject until we move to that, because that is one of the questions we're talking about testing right now? Are you okay if we just hang tight?
Well, okay, the other one, are, are you talking about the masking?
I'm talking about, let's just question them regarding the testing. I'd like to keep it consistent that we don't jump around all over these questions.
Okay, because mine is about masking, are we going to talk about masking later?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, well, both of mine were...
Great. To that, okay, no problem. Mr. Fur?
No questions.
Mr. Walter?
So when we report, are we count these numbers? Are we counting both of these tests, or are we double counting? What do we, how does that work?
No, so individuals do not get double counted, so in your data that you're seeing right here, so a positive elementary student, and that's 71, if they, for some reason, had a positive rapid and a positive PCR, they're not counted as two. It's one, you're talking about unique individuals here.
Okay. If we're looking at it the opposite, you're kind of saying it's, would not be good to use that to determine if somebody's safety comes to school, the rapid test? You're saying it's not, not good for, it's only good for if somebody's symptomatic? Is that, explain, that's what I'm trying to say, is it a test, what, does it pick up if somebody's not symptomatic? Are they still going to get a positive off this test, or they're not?
Well, the rapid test, if it's positive, I would keep that person, but if, are you saying if it's negative?
I'm saying if you have a student and you're giving them a rapid test, if they don't have symptoms, is it worthwhile giving them that rapid test?
Well, if you're screening because of exposure, that's a, that's a decent test for screening, but, you know, whether you implement that test because they've been exposed or not, I, I, you know, I'd have to talk to Erin about that when that's done, but it would, it's certainly the test I would use. If the patients, if the student is asymptomatic but has had a positive exposure, but usually exposure means that you're going to be quarantined, you know, like there's no mask on, you're exposed to someone who's has, obviously has a disease and was contagious, then that person really should be out of circulation until a more definitive test comes back. But, but we do use the screening test, because if it's positive again, we don't have to wait for the, for the final test. If it's negative, it's not definitive, and so you would wait, you'd have to wait a couple more days.
You're looking at that aspect, I'm going back to this chart that's behind you that says, out of all these people that are quarantined, in this case, last, last week, only 13% of them ended up being positive, so that's, you know, 87% of these kids are, are home, but they're not, they're not symptomatic, and they don't end up getting COVID, so they really should be okay to go to school. That's what I'm trying, that's, that's the point I'm trying.
And you know what? That's a very good point, and, you know, it's, it's really the nature of what we're dealing with. These are microbes that, you know, are difficult to, to ascertain that they're there or that they're not there. I can't tell you, you know, over the past year and a half, looking at women, I'm an obstetrician, I'm not a pediatrician, looking at women and coming in, they come in because they've got symptoms, and they're worried, especially if they're pregnant, because of the increased risk of preterm birth and whatnot. And when you're dealing with a microbe and infectious disease, you're talking about something that's very protean, it's very varied, it doesn't follow the rules necessarily. We have what's called form frusts of infection, meaning that no matter what your experiential level is, you are not going to be able to absolutely determine, once and for all, if this person has an infection or not, without the definitive test. And so we fail, we fail 87% of the time here to actually identify the problem, and you know what? You have to live with that, unfortunately. You know, the technology just isn't there to do any better. As in reference to the pap smear before, my gosh, pap smears really have a low sensitivity, but the reason it picked up cervical cancer and dropped from 40,000 a year to 5,000 a year is because we did them every year. And along that, that pathological tray, track from one year to 10 years, which is the amount of time usually dysplasia goes on to cancer, a pap smear is going to be positive, we do the exam on it, and we remove the disease. It is a difficult thing to live with. You know, 87% versus 13%, we're keeping 87% home, I wish we had more accuracy. That's the best explanation I can give you.
Okay, I appreciate that, and then the other one's going to be for Erin. Since September 1st, the active cases in Cabarrus County are down 33%, and the positivity rate is down 30%. Why is that?
Well, I mean, I think there are a number of reasons. So we've, we've passed our, our Labor Day weekend, we're, we're all getting settled into somewhat of a routine. We had a lot of back-to-school activities, and then as a state as a whole, we came back to school. If you go to the DHHS website, you know, the date that we brought students back to school was the highest date of positive cases that came into Cabarrus County. So, you know, I think we're doing a really good job of mitigating risk where we can mitigate risk. We're slowly getting people vaccinated, not nearly as quickly as we would like to, so I think there are many confounding factors that go into that. But if you look at the winter surge, right, so if you look at our holiday surge, you know, it went up and came down as people became more aware that, hey, this is out there and more prevalent, so I think there's a lot of confounding factors. Before we move on, I do want, so Tammy is really incredibly well-versed in the strong schools toolkit. I always try to have to slow down to say that. So I do want Tammy just to remind us what the strong schools toolkit says about asymptomatic and symptomatic students where rapids and PCR tests are concerned, because I think just reminding ourselves and kind of level-setting is important, so.
Do you mind?
Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight and speak with you. So just to look at the big picture, in the school setting, we are only requiring PCRs for those students who are symptomatic, and I just think that's important for us to remember. A child who is coming back to be tested for a shortened quarantine is able to have a rapid antigen test, and then what we do is we give them guidance to continue masking, to continue social distancing, all of those other mitigation strategies, because what we know is that even though they have that negative test on that day five after exposure, there's a... on that day five after exposure, there's a risk that exists up until day 14. So we can't just say, come back and, you know, participate without mask and all of those other strategies being in place. But we can say that as a screening tool, the rapid antigen is accurate enough for us to feel comfortable with accepting that rapid negative. If a child has symptoms, that sensitivity is just not there. It is a very specific test. So if it's positive, then we can be certain that it's a positive for COVID because the test is very specific. But it's not all that sensitive. So if there's a child who is symptomatic and they have a rapid test that is negative, we have to be concerned. Did it just not pick up on the viral proteins that it needs to pick up on? Is there not enough viral load? So that's why there's the follow-up with the PCR. Most parents are just choosing to go straight for a PCR. You may also hear it called a molecular test. So some practices actually have a rapid molecular where the family can get real-time results and we can accept those. So when we're looking at testing the school site, symptomatic is when we're going to require the PCR. Asymptomatic, we can accept that rapid antigen. There is one clause in strong schools that says, if you have a student who has a rapid antigen and they have no known exposure and no risk factors, that a test can be sent off within 24 to 48 hours of that rapid antigen. You can have a PCR sent off. If it comes back as a negative, then you say, hey, this was a false positive. Because as Dr. Suda explained, no test is 100%. There is always a room for error, a risk for error. So that is one clause that you'll find in strong schools is that if you have an asymptomatic person with low risk factors or no known risk, they can follow up with a PCR within 24 to 48 hours and then that rapid positive would be negated and not accepted. So that child would not be counted as positive at that time. Any further questions about that, Mr. Walters?
Anything else? Ms. Blatchel?
No, thank you.
Ms. Sandage?
So I want this question to make sense. It doesn't really make sense in my mind, but I know what I want to understand. So when we take COVID, for example, and how we are treating what's happening and how we are learning it and what we do based off of what we learn from that, how does this differ from, say, another virus? Like, how do we walk through that same exact process? Because what I'm trying to understand in my mind is why is this so, oh, good gracious, why is this so extra, it seems like? Why are we getting all of these questions from this side and that side? And why is this all seeming so confusing? Is this the normal process that we follow as a whole when we identify a virus? Did that make sense?
Sure.
So that's a very good question. And that's probably a question that a lot of people that are not medically related might have. It's like the flu. When we had the flu, did we have the flu A and we had the flu B? And we were already kind of used to it. It did kill people. It did kill people in the hospital and children included. However, we didn't see this big surge of the sort of, which is what happened with COVID. Now, COVID is a coronavirus. We've seen coronavirus forever in children with colds. We used to test them for RSV, if anybody's familiar with that term, coronavirus and flu. Now, this type of coronavirus, again, is from that family. It's like a cousin, has actually caused a lot of problems. And one of the problems is that it actually causes this inflammation. When it started emerging, inflammation on the lungs, people couldn't even get vent. There was stiffening of the lungs. So that is something that, we don't see it all the time. We don't see it with every single virus. But I go back to the flu. Then we had that swine flu, that they call it. And it did kill a lot of people. It was different than the flu A and flu B, but it was part of the same family. So I wouldn't say that we go through all of this at the same time in the same way. But I would tell you that there's many times that we don't hear about that because it hasn't affected society and the population and the community as the coronavirus COVID-19 has. And that is why all of this has emerged into a big, right now, the whole United States is in a red zone, part of the CDC again. So we have seen a huge surge. Yes, we're starting to see a little bit of minus because people, this is my belief, personal, about on August, right before the school started, that we were vaccinated so eagerly, everybody. What happened at Walmart and most of the grocery stores? They said, if you're vaccinated, we're taking the honor that if you say you are, you just come in and don't wear a mask. And half the people were not wearing a mask, but half of those people were not vaccinated. What did we see? An increase again. So we're back into everybody has to wear a mask, even if you're vaccinated. So we're going to deal with this. It's definitely, unfortunately, something that is very fluid right now. Newer to us, it's been 20 minutes into the pandemic, but it's obviously a pandemic. And then we don't go through all of this, all of this, you know, measurements with every virus that we encounter, but it depends on how lethal they are. I don't know if that is explained a little better.
It does. And what I'm trying to, I guess, answer for myself and answer for a lot of people is we're struggling between rapid tests and PCR tests. And I guess what I'm trying to make, I guess, make sense in my mind is that it really and truly doesn't matter which one it is. It matters if it's positive, and that's what you're saying. If it's positive, we are sure that it's positive. Right? Okay.
Right, so if we have a student who is positive, it is a positive and they follow that protocol. And I appreciate Dr. Torres bringing up this point. You know, all but two states right now in the United States are in high transmission. And so, community transmission. So what we would hope to see is that when we get back down to the orange and yellow and green, I don't even remember the color schemes anymore, but that, you know, we can become more confident in accepting all rapids and not having to worry about PCRs. When we get to an appropriate place, I would love to give you an update on the K-12 testing program because I think we've got some resources that will be here soon to help probably not eliminate all the barriers to access a PCR test, but a lot of them.
Okay, so I think one of the last questions along that line was, and I know one of the doctors spoke to this. So it seems like you have some type of criteria of when you test for patients that have some symptoms but not a lot of symptoms. So I think, you know, we're getting hit pretty hard that it doesn't appear to be. And I guess that's always the judgment call of a pediatrician of when that is. But it not being consistent. You know, if a child goes in and one has sneezing and you say, well, this is not necessary. This is allergies. But another pediatrician might say, well, I'm not taking any chances. We're doing it anyway and we're not going to rapid, we're going to PCR. So that puts that child out for two, three, four days and not having anything. So, you know, I guess that's the issue with a lot of people in the community who are saying, you know, our kids are getting quarantined, you know, because of contact tracing and/or pediatricians in the clinics are making the judgment call. And then saying, well, Cabarrus County Schools doesn't take the rapid. That probably is not a true statement or accurate statement, and I think that's a confusing statement. So if we could get some clarification on that.
Yeah, and actually, the next question, it's a great segue because the next question is, where's the miscommunication with local medical offices? So I'm going to invite Tammy to come up again and talk through some of the strategies and talk through how much we are actually communicating with the medical offices. But I do want to hit on one point. You know, we're never going to direct a clinician on how to treat their patient. So it doesn't matter what sort of guidelines we put out there. If Dr. Torres or Dr. Suda feels like this sort of test is needed or that sort of test, or that they chose to diagnose based off of a clinical presentation, we're not going to change that. So Tammy, if you'll talk to just the communication with medical offices and perhaps how this fluid situation does sometimes become confusing.
Absolutely. And then just to expand upon what Erin was saying, I think it's important to know that, you know, nurses are making referrals to the physician's office often. They're the ones who see these students and they're symptomatic. It does have to depend on the physician, the decision that they make. That physician may be very comfortable with writing an alternative diagnosis or they may choose to send for testing. That's outside of the nurse's control. The nurse just has to follow the strong schools guidelines for which symptoms require exclusion. Our school health team is in communication with Atrium Health specifically. We've talked with Dr. News, who is one of the lead pediatricians for Atrium, to explain the requirements that we are currently using for return to school. And we did ask that that be shared across the local atrium practices. We also asked that, one of the barriers that we've noticed is that families are not being given anything in writing. So they're being told, we'll call you if it's positive. You may not hear from us if it's negative. So we've had those conversations to explain how that becomes a barrier for students to return to school because we need some sort of documentation. Nurses continually communicate with physician's offices to try to get lab results or to try to get alternative diagnoses. Because our ultimate goal is to have these students at school, to have them healthy and to have them, you know, ready to learn. So, you know, there is a lot of communication that's going on and a lot of collaboration between local practices and the nurses.
So Tammy, can I just make a statement to that?
Sure.
Because, of course, with me being board chair, I get a lot of these. I think, you know, the real disconnect is it's a Friday. They get the phone call. The parent gets confused about what they were told. They call back, school's closed. They call the health department. The health department, somebody else gives them something else. I hear that, you know, it's based on what the parent gives them the feedback then. You know, they forget what date they told the others that they might have been exposed. Or, you know, I just think there's a lot, well, we know that there's a lot of miscommunication because there's so many people that are part of that puzzle, you know, that's put together when it comes to a school nurse not being there or school administration and then it flipping over to the health department. Or the health department has to call them back. And then a third person gets involved in it. So, you know, I just, I think we really have to wrap our mind around how we get the same people saying the same thing over the same child because that's what becomes the most frustrating piece of it.
Our team has worked very closely to try to end that problem because we saw that. We, you know, we know that families get confused or they get frustrated and they may get a different date. Well, the date that you give then determines the isolation date or the quarantine date. So what we've done is we've said, no one's giving dates except for the school nurse. So if the state is contacting families, they're giving general guidance. They're offering information about resources in the community. If someone from our COVID department contacts the family, same thing. We are making sure that we have clear communication and only one person is giving this return to school date. Because we definitely, in the beginning of the year, saw that there was some miscommunication. So hopefully we've eliminated that. If you continue to hear those reports, we would love to know that because we are always trying to improve our processes and making sure that we're efficient.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and let me just add also, if we have or if you are getting calls from those medical offices, you know, if you can share those in real time so that we're not trying to address these generalities, but we can go directly to that office if it tends to be one office. And then the other thing is our Public Health Command Center and our COVID department are still working weekends. And so if someone will call and leave a message at 704-920-1213, you know, that will be monitored on the weekend and returned. So Friday at 5:00 PM doesn't mean that all communication ends until Monday at 8:00 AM.
Erin, could you repeat that number again? Thank you.
And your nurse, your school nurses are also working some weekends right now just trying to stay afloat, so.
If I may add something, because I'm in the side where I get the results and I have to have my staff calling because I can't make every single phone call. Now, again, if you know of people that are not receiving the information that they need, then we need to kind of know that, Erin has to know that, to monitor all their offices and so forth. In our office at least, we always give the parent a letter. And it says in there, not a date. It says, you were tested today for this. You need to remain in quarantine, all of the people in your family until we call you. And I always tell them it takes between one and three days. So they are aware of that. And they're also aware that if I get, like today, I got several positive rapid tests and they were sick, the kids had symptoms. So I said, okay, now this is the guideline, but the COVID team will still call you with a specific date. You may not return to work, you might not return to school. So we need to, and it's true, it is all new and everybody does things a little differently, but we do need to communicate. And if we're not doing that as physicians in the school, then we need to do better. And we can only hear that from you guys. Now, I just want to point out that it's not great to have a kid for two to three days missing school. But it beats the last year where everybody was online because we didn't know how to control this. So we are improving. We just have to make sure that we keep up with it. It's not time to just put our guards down. It is just not time yet.
Thank you. Okay, so Erin, you want to go on to the next question?
Sure.
Can we back up just about masks? Because that probably catches Ms. Carpenter. I'm sorry, I was going to do this in between your questions and I did not. So when you were discussing about why we're wearing masks, okay? And then we talk about the positivity rate, which we know came down quite a bit today. So that's what the conversation we were having earlier. So Ms. Carpenter, I'll let you go back and visit your question.
All right, this is the mask part. Okay, mask part.
Go for it.
Okay, mask part. Okay, I have a couple of questions because we've got numerous, and this would be for you guys too. Because we have got numerous emails. And some of them are saying, and I've asked this a couple of times, they'll say these masks here are detrimental to these little children, that they're breathing in terrible, you know, breathing in terrible things when they breathe in these masks. So can you tell me if these masks are hurting our children? Because you would not believe the emails that I have gotten. And they'll send me all these types of emails. And one of our members down here even said that, that they're giving their children headaches and all these type things and that these masks are hurting our children. And I want to hear what y'all've got to say about this. So I've got my doctors and I've got my health lines. That's my first question.
Well, I did a little research on this earlier this afternoon because I thought that that would be a question that would be asked. And it's a very understandable question. I think it's very valid. And I thought, my gosh, I've been an obstetrician for over 40 years and I can't ever remember ever hearing that hypercapnia, which is excess carbon dioxide that you rebreathe from a mask that you use in surgery or to deliver a baby, would ever accumulate to the point that it could cause a problem. I was corrected a bit. You know, masks aren't completely benign. But there's a significant difference in the types of masks and which ones are going to cause more problems. The ones we're all wearing here, I'm assuming nobody has an N95 on, really transmit a lot more air. They're a lot more ventilatory than an N95, which really, you don't like that on your face very long at all. It's very tight and it's meant to be tight. It's meant to keep out microbes, okay? This mask is meant to keep out splatter, spit, cough, droplets coming out with coughing, with singing, with sneezing. It's also meant to actually keep you from being exposed to that should somebody sneeze in your direction without a mask. That porosity that it has over the N95 allows CO2 to go in and out, but it does keep those gross droplets off of you and from being spread to other people. So it has a real role. The National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health looked at, you know, these typical masks. And after short-term use, there was no elevation in CO2 that was above the level that they considered to be safe or causing of symptoms. It does go up, there's no question. When you impede the flow of air out of your lungs with these masks, you're rebreathing CO2, okay? But they absolutely said there should be absolutely no, there's no evidence that the levels that they measured on 11 people that they checked it on, that it would ever cause any long-term ill effects. The jury on long-term use, which is eight hours or more, that's continuous use, I would assume. I looked for the definition on it, they said eight hours. You start getting to higher levels, but still, with these more porous masks, they weren't excessive. However, you wear an N95 for that long, you're going to get a headache very likely. You're not going to feel well. You may be somewhat less alert because as carbon dioxide levels go up in your blood, we know this from chronic obstructive pulmonary disease patients, they become eventually very hard to communicate with and they can become obtunded and they can get comatose. That's what happens with real high levels of carbon dioxide. But that doesn't happen with these masks, according to the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health. I'm not sure if that, I mean, there's no question that masks also, for children with glasses, causes their glasses to fog up at times, they can't see as well. It's an impediment to learning, no question. But any decision that you make, that's a medical decision, is going to have risks and benefits going in both directions, okay? The benefit is that we really, we really start dropping our active infection rates because we're wearing masks. The risk is the kids aren't as tied in. And it's, kids like to look at facial expressions to know if they're being approved of or disapproved of. You can't see them behind a mask nearly as well. You can't see them behind a mask nearly as well. And if masks get moist, it can actually get contaminated and help spread disease. So I'm not saying masks are the end-all, be-all, but, you know, I think one of the most sacred things we have in society is to protect our children as they get their education and, and make sure they get a quality education. When kids went home to be in front of a computer, and I, I'm talking to you as the experts because I'm not the expert, but what I gathered from my grandchildren is they didn't learn a thing. You know, my, my daughter complained that her kids were just like doing nothing and getting an F. These kids never got Fs before. So I, I think that it's, it's the lesser of, of two evils. I mean, I think keeping kids home is the ultimate way to separate everybody. It's, it's, it deprives them of their socialization education, which is so much a part of school education, in my opinion. And, you know, they just don't get taught as well. So I, I think that in, in everything, everybody's got, I think, a lot of COVID fatigue, including myself. I don't like wearing these masks, you know, and I was a surgeon for years doing, doing, doing surgery with these things on. And I certainly understand the frustration. But, but I do think, given the fact that we're in the middle of another surge and hospitals are filling up, and if you often do is walk through a hospital ICU and see them, all the ventilator patients and knowing they're all there with, you know, supporting a COVID infection, it's, it's scary. And it justifies, in my opinion, what we're doing. But I'm ready and anxious to rip them off as soon as we can. And I wish, and I know one of your questions was what percentage we have to go down to do that. That's, that's the head of the CDC that's going to have to tell us that. I do believe.
Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter, anything else?
Uh, that's, that was the main one with that because the other one, you said we'd get to that. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay. Mr. Fur?
I don't have anything. Looks like any questions I've, I've had are, are getting answered, so.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I guess the only thing to add to that is kids actually don't wear, typically wear the mask correctly all the time. So you do have kids wearing the same mask day after day or sneezing or getting wet or whatever, and they're not very effective at that point.
And that's a good point because my son, I went to pick him up early the other day and they were all in the playground with no masks. So they took it their break. Now, was that great? I don't know. They were playing together, touching each other. There were like 30 kids, but they do gear breaks, you know? It isn't like, and they are getting used to it. I'm surprised how well the kids adjust, unfortunately, but this is truth. The beginning, everybody hated it. And now they just can't live without a mask that looks cute. And as long as you're doing this cloth mask, you know, that's still protecting both ways, themselves and the other children.
I'd still like to see an end in sight. And right now, you're not giving us a whole lot of hope for that, so.
Ms. Blackwell?
Okay, I got a couple of questions. And I had some earlier, but I wasn't sure if we were talking PCR versus rapid or when should I bring those up? So one of my questions is with the mask situation, are we inhibiting our natural immunity from being built up in these, especially for children? When you're a child, you know, years ago, if somebody had chicken pox, you took them over to their house, everybody got the chicken pox so you could just get it over with. What are we doing as far as, because now we don't hear about flu anymore? Now it's COVID or nothing. And so are we keeping children from being able to create their own natural immunity to sicknesses that are going to be around for a long time?
I think that's a very good question and I wish that I could tell you 100% the answer to that. I think it's only going to take time since this is a problem that has just started 20 months ago and we're seeing it. However, I don't think that we're inhibited their children immunity by any means with the mask. Not too sure about the COVID, but they're exposing their homes to people that come in and out, that go to work. Their little ones are in daycare, which I'm seeing still, and they're getting sometimes COVIDs. And they still get the hand, foot, mouth disease and they get ear infections. So I do not think that's inhibited their immune system. COVID-wise, I couldn't tell you. So we are not going to know until we start seeing these kids without their mask. But they're getting exposed to adults that have been exposed to many other people. So I do not believe that that's going to be the case.
So can maybe you answer for me what happened to flu? Because I get this question quite often. We, we have always had a tremendous flu season typically, and we have not seen that. Is it, are we test, like, is, is it just being tested for COVID and we just don't know if it's flu or?
That is an excellent question too. And I think flu, it's like anything else. We know kind of the season of the flu and we test for the flu. So I think a lot of nutrition and family practice offices are testing, starting to test for both. Right now, there is even, there is a high demand, so we are waiting for our flu test. So yes, people are knowing that we need to test for everything, that we have tested before because unfortunately COVID looks like anything that we've seen before in terms of, you know, viruses, colds. So I cannot tell you 100% this is not flu, but we're starting to test. We're waiting for our test to come in. And I think a lot of the offices are doing that as well.
And so there have been some studies, and I know we've kind of talked a little bit about this, about the masks and how dirty they are on the inside as far as what kids are actually transmitting into their bodies with these masks that are having fecal matter that's being tested on the inside of these masks and all kinds of things like that. Are we ensuring that these kids are changing out their masks every day at school when they're wearing them eight hours? Because I know that, I know that they're not all necessarily getting the mask breaks that they need. And then what are we doing to help mitigate to make sure that these masks are clean, that they're putting on their faces all day long?
I think Ms. Tammy will be probably one of the best, but I'm going to tell you as a mom, that my child came home and I say, why you wearing, why you have those two masks? Because my teacher said you can only wear the mask one day or two days and after that you need a new one. So they don't let me wear it. So the teachers are being very careful about that.
I think this is a situation where it's going to require collaboration between families, school, school nurses. There are masks available for children at schools. So there's an availability. Is there someone who's policing to say, how many days have you been wearing that mask? Probably not at school. So it's important that moms and dads know that children should be changing their masks frequently. If they are cloth masks, that they should be washed regularly. And if they're the disposable mask, they're meant to be thrown in the trash. They're not meant to be used over and over again. We know that there are families who don't have the resources to provide, you know, a large number of masks for their children. So what I would say is that we would want those families to reach out to the school nurse or to school staff so that we can work with them to make sure that they have an adequate supply so that they have clean masks. I know that I've been in schools where, you know, a child has on a visibly dirty mask and I have seen school staff, not just school nurses, you know, the front office person or someone else say, let me get you a clean mask. So it is being recognized and addressed within the schools.
And what point do we take into account natural immunity? Now, I've seen all of these numbers of like for every person that gets reported that has COVID, there was probably three more that had it that just didn't know it. So at some point in society, we're going to have a very large group, whether you call it herd immunity or what, of people who have either had COVID now at this point and are now naturally immune and are vaccinated. At what point do we start taking natural immunity into this as well besides just the vaccine? Because I see all of these mandates about vaccination, but I don't really hear a whole lot about natural immunity. And from, from some of the things that I've seen, the natural immunity is actually better than the vaccine itself.
Dr. Robert Malone would agree with you. He's a father of viral vaccination technology. And he came out three weeks ago and said that based upon an Israeli study that was done, that getting the COVID infection has a better depth and breadth of immunity that it's, that it's generated from the wild virus than it is from the vaccine. And that was a change because in this situation, the vaccine had taken precedence over the wild type virus. And I, I know that there's controversy with that statement and I don't want to scare Erin here because I want to make sure she knows that I like masks, but, but the wild virus seems to cause, you know, equal or greater immunity. However, you know, if you're going to depend on the wild virus to do it for you, you're going to, you're going to sacrifice a lot of lives, okay? The vaccine is the expedient decision because a vaccine, maybe six in 100,000 will get, you know, a serious reaction to that vaccine. But if you take 100,000 people who get the virus, you're going to drop 3, 4,000 people probably. So I, I wish natural immunity worked well. It's a good thing coronavirus is as forgiving as it is because when we went back to smallpox, it wiped out whole tribes of Native Americans, whole tribes. That was all natural immunity, but they didn't survive to have natural immunity. Actually, if you look at the historical stories on that, there were Native Americans that survived that and they were completely immune. But they were rare because almost everybody died. So we're fortunate in that the coronavirus is, you know, it, it's certainly mortal, but it's not as bad as, as other viruses like Ebola, like smallpox. We would have lost 10 times as many people. So natural immunity is contributory, no question, no question. But you're going to sacrifice a lot of lives if you circumvent vaccination to go to natural immunity.
I think my point was is that it's not to sacrifice vaccination versus natural immunity. It's just, and a combination of the two. We're not talking about natural immunity, I think, is quite as much as in the way that we, we, we could be. Because there, like I said, for every one or two people that are reported, there are three or four more that have actually already had the virus and might not have even known that they had it. So there's quite a bit more in natural immunity, or at least based on the reports that I've seen potentially out there. And then one more question and then I will be quiet. So the CDC came out today and there was some information that talked, and I, and I only say this because you had talked about the ICUs. And that a lot, some of the numbers for the, the folks that had been in the ICU that had been reported as deaths from COVID potentially were not classified correctly. They were classified as COVID deaths, but they were actually heart attacks versus other ailments. Do we have any kind of, as far as your expertise in that area with, with how we're classifying that these folks that are in the ICU that are coming in with other things, but then are also happening to test positive for COVID?
Well, if, if, did you say if they do, if they had tested positive for COVID?
Correct. I think there was a study that came out today where the CDC reported 51,000 people that they classified as COVID deaths actually had died from heart attacks. And so how are we getting that information out to the community? Because it's, it's obviously skewing the, the data and it's skewing the numbers. And so are we looking at that to make sure that these, these, this information that's being reported, that they may be COVID positive, but they're actually there for something else that was the initial acute issue?
You know, that, I think that's a very good point. It's really the chicken before the egg. You know, it's, it's a question of did they come in with COVID initially? Because if they came in with COVID initially or that test was done and the anticipation she had, he or she had COVID and then ended up going to the ICU and then follow, after that went into adult respiratory distress syndrome or had an MI, which is a heart attack. You know, that's true that the final assault on the person was something that wasn't COVID, but COVID set it all up. I mean, and, you know, if we look at maternal mortality, we, we ascribe it to obstetrics, to pregnancy. If a woman dies six months after her birth because of substance use disorder that she was using during her pregnancy but went undiagnosed. I mean, we have to ascribe cause and effect to the, the originator of the assault. And if COVID was there when they entered the hospital because they were ill and, you know, they were dehydrated and they were weak and they couldn't stand up. And then they put them in the ICU and did a nasal swab and found out they were COVID positive, even though they may have other organs that are failing, you have to at least entertain to determine the cause of death, whether COVID was the initial, you know, a problem there. That's what autopsy pathology is all about. I mean, it's working backwards. What was the initial assault? And then you can say secondary diagnosis, tertiary diagnosis, quaternary diagnosis under the original diagnosis. But the original diagnosis is why the cascade of deterioration occurred afterward. I, I hope that's helpful. But then that's what, that's why, you know, they'll say it's a COVID death or they'll say, oh, he died of a heart attack. Well, yeah, but that's because he was in shock, you know? His blood pressure was 70 over 40 because, you know, he was in septic shock from COVID and a secondary bacterial pneumonia. They just line up one after the other. And the ultimate, you know, cause of death really goes back to what was the original insult that led to the cascade of events and ultimately did the patient in.
If I may add something, I'm going to echo everything that Dr. Suda said, but it's like the chicken or the egg, what came first? And it's the truth. And you're completely right. We don't know what this next 12 months are going to show of the rate of death that we're attributing to, in the ICUs to COVID or something else. We don't know. And like you said, they're going to keep coming out with other studies. But I just have to say, somebody dear to my family died of, of a bowel obstruction, completely healthy, 45-year-old female. But she had COVID and had been seen in the hospital two days before, went home, got worse, and she came in and they did surgery and she died. So she died of her bowel obstruction. But was that related to COVID? Well, we don't know. We're going to know with time. So it's going to be a hard thing to know right now and to give 100% and even the CDC. And there will be contradictions. And right now, in other states, they do claim this person died of something else and they're revising all of the death certificates because they're like, okay, but this came after she was admitted for COVID. But we don't know yet. I mean, everything that COVID can cause in your body, we do know that is, can cause multi-systems disease.
Just to add to that, our COVID department has to enter information that is sent to the state. So anytime there's a COVID death, there's specific information that the state is collecting. And then there are experts at the state who will reach out and say, you know, this doesn't meet our criteria or we need more information. So if the decisions aren't made here in Cabarrus County as to whether or not a death is associated with COVID, we give the information, but ultimately that information goes to the state and that's where those numbers are then, you know, attributed to COVID or it's said, no, it's not a COVID-related death.
Is that it, Ms. Blackwell?
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Ms. Sanders?
I should have said this first. I truly appreciate you guys for coming down here. I know you guys have been to school for probably half of your life studying these things. And today, and, you know, months prior to this, you have become incompetent to our communities and that is so unfair. I appreciate the time that you guys have taken out in your day, where you probably should be home resting because you are tired, just as tired as we are with all of the threats that we get, with all of the people who don't believe what we're saying and question everything that we do. I just want to hear from me and this board, I think this board, I would say this board, that we truly appreciate y'all. And I, I believe everything that you say. It's not the sheep, it's the, this is science. And I am sorry you guys have had to go through so many things.
I appreciate what you said, but I think it takes a community to raise a child and I am a strong believer. So if you care and you invite us here to hear more about us, it's because you care about the children in the school. So we are very appreciative.
Ms. Adcock, anything?
No, I'd just also like to say what Ms. Sanders said. We really appreciate our partnership with you and helping us to understand. I think for us, you know, we just want to make the right decision. We want our kids in school. We want them to get an education. That's the first thing that we're supposed to do. So not having medical knowledge about this and having experts like you in our community is valuable and we really appreciate it.
So I have just a couple of questions that we kind of talked about just a little bit. As far as mask breaks, when you were talking about the mask breaks, we know that they are getting them. Is there a recommendation? You know, we know a child is in school for somewhat seven to eight hours and of course high school is much longer. But is, is there a recommendation or have y'all thought about, you know, how, what is the timeframe that they need to have a mask break? Like how many minutes for every so, so many hours? Is there something out there, maybe a standard that y'all talked about?
I do not believe that there's any studies done on that yet just because it's all so new. And like Dr. Suda said, you know, there's the studies on surgeons or people that are wearing longer time masks or the N95. We haven't studied kits yet on that. But I think that the fact that they're actually even at lunchtime taking them off and usually it's within three to four hours of their arriving to school. And then by then it's three hours more and then they still get a break in between there for going outside and PE. I mean, at this point, that's as good as it's going to get, I think. I do think that protecting them when they're close together, that that's the best way that we can try to eliminate or decrease the risk of getting them sick.
Right. You know, when you stop and think about, especially bus riders, you know, they're on the school bus for some, you know, 45 minutes to an hour, then they're in school for seven or eight hours and then they're on that bus again for another hour or so. So that is a really long day. So we know that it is very important that our teachers and our staff, you know, understand that those mask breaks are extremely that those mask breaks are extremely important. Okay, and then the other thing, have you seen yet, and this may be a question for Tammy, any type of starting to see a rise in either sinus or tonsillitis, or any of the other things that sometimes are prohibited with the mask, that keeps those infections inside? Anything from that yet? It may be a little early in the season for that.
Yeah, so we're seeing lots of kids with sore throats, and, you know, that's where it gets confusing, because could it be COVID? Or is it just that you're wearing a mask and not drinking like you should? But as far as, you know, specifics, no, we've not seen a large rise in anything.
All right, thank you. Okay, Erin, you can continue on.
All right. All right, I think we've hit a lot of these. So you've seen the updated data, we've talked about quarantines, the risk benefit, I think Dr. Suda did a beautiful job talking about, you know, the benefit of quarantining kids, keeping them out, is keeping potentially infectious kids out of schools, infecting others. I've got a question, I'm not exactly sure the intent behind it, so you may have to help me out, but it just says Health Department guidelines. So I think it's a good time to pause and talk about, you know, as, so Cabarrus Health Alliance, even though we don't have Health Department in our name, or the Public Health Department for Cabarrus County, and so we do follow direction from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. So, you know, Dr. Coyle, who sends her regrets she couldn't be here tonight, has ultimate authority for case investigations and contact tracing, but all communities and all health departments can't do that individually. And what Dr. Torres just said, it's partnerships and it's community, because it takes our school nurses to identify and help us figure out who was around them. And so, just so you know, you know, you've got NCDHHS, who is getting their guidance from a number of reputable sources, and then that is what we are following and helping to guide locally. So again, I don't know if there was more to that question?
I can clarify that. So we get a lot of, you know, number one, you are the board that was given the authority by the state and charged by the governor to make a decision every month. But I think the clarification needs to be made, that that's only regarding masking. Our authority stops at that door. You know, it's really on the state, it's you, the local and the state, that makes the quarantine and contact tracing guidelines, and that is your part to take care of. That's really not ours. And because we do intersect at that road, that has become very confusing and very frustrating, especially for parents, because, you know, a lot of them are saying, well, if you have the authority to make that rule or change that rule, because the governor said you could, we'll know that ours is regarding masking. So can you expand on that?
Yeah, I think it's a fair question, and I get that there, it's a lot of information. I can't remember how Ms. Sanders referred to it earlier, but essentially, it's just a lot, and all at one time. And, you know, the reality is, it's still a marathon, and we're still pretty early in the marathon. We said this, you know, in 2020, and I think we're still going to be saying it in 2022, and nobody wants to hear me say that. But yeah, so, you know, local boards of education can elect masks, no masks, we see that across the state. But what we've also seen are some local communities trying to change policy around quarantines and contact tracing, and we've seen the state respond to that. And so, you know, I'm never going to make a recommendation, Cabarrus Health Alliance isn't any of my colleagues here that may ultimately end up with a legal letter coming to you because of not following a guideline, so.
So just for some clarification for the general public, we spoke at our last meeting regarding making some changes to that. Mr. Basilese may want to, and we were discussing that, and of course, the board did agree that if that were able to take place, that we agreed to it. But we're pretty much emphatically told that we cannot, in fact, do that. So if you'd like to take it from there.
Sure. So, and I understand that could be a very confusing thing for the public. When we last met, we talked a lot about this idea of triaging our highest-risk cases for contact tracing, and doing that in a manner in which we would implement contact tracing in settings where we had two or more positive cases. At the time, it seemed like a really good idea, seemed like a good way to prioritize risk, and we made that recommendation to you all. We said we wanted to move forward with that. We oriented our principals, our nurses, we oriented everyone we could to go ahead and move forward with that on a Monday. Just prior to that Monday, we had heard that the state was going to forbid such actions from local boards of doing that. So, and on September the 20th, we received, in fact, everybody, I think, in the state of North Carolina, received a notice from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, reminding us of the control measures in schools related to isolations, quarantines, and exclusions. And in that, they specifically tell us that there is an obligation to ensure that we are excluding students and notifying students when they've been exposed. So there's no way that you could do a triaged contact tracing and meet the requirement that NCDHHS put on us. So I guess what you all are, I'm going to use the word wrestling with, because I can't really put it another way, is this idea of people saying, you guys want it both ways, right? You want to make a decision, and you also don't want to make a decision. This doesn't seem like a decision that's in our wheelhouse to make. It sounds to me, in my lived experience with you all, we made a decision, we made a determination, and then we received notice that, at the state level, that we were not supposed to move forward with that.
Thank you, and Ms. Blackwell?
Sure, I just, John, you may want to stay up here, too. I'm sorry. So I do have a question about when kids are being quarantined for close contact, because let's just say that their teacher has told them a couple of times they hadn't worn their mask correctly, and they got to pull it up in the classroom. And so they're being listed as a close contact or potential contact with exposure to that. Now, I guess my question is, if you're in a classroom and you have your mask like this, and the teacher tells you, you can't wear it like that, you need to pull it up, and then the person that's three feet away from you, two days later, gets diagnosed with COVID, was that really an exposure? Because based on everything that I've seen, it states that you have to have 15 minutes cumulatively within a day. So you're talking a couple of minutes, maybe, that you've had your mask below your nose. So how are we kind of mitigating that? Because there are situations that I've had where I've had children's parents call me, and they say, well, they can't really tell me where they, but they said that they weren't wearing their mask a couple of times properly and had to pull it up. Is that really a necessary, I guess my question is, could we not maybe mitigate some of the quarantines by not, you know, if we're talking 20% or so of these kids that are not testing, or the, you know, 80-some-odd percent that are not testing positive, would that be maybe a way to kind of help with some of the quarantines? If it's just really just a, you got to pull your mask up, make sure you got it on correctly kind of thing?
So the guidance here says that the exclusion from contact tracing is when students are properly masked. So it really does rest on the idea that students are properly masked. Now, if somebody's got their mask down, you know, and under their nose or something of that nature, and it has not been 15 minutes within a 24-hour period, then they're not going to be excluded from school, they're not going to be quarantined in those circumstances.
I want you to say that again, please, because I really want to make sure that that is the way that this is happening, when these kids are being quarantined.
I'll have to remember exactly what I said, but...
I want you to say again, that you said if it's not been 15 minutes cumulatively within a 24-hour period, that these children are not being quarantined.
So the way Strong Schools reads is that children have to consistently and properly wear their mask. If they are not wearing their mask in the classroom setting, there is no time limit on that. So if they are in the classroom without that mask, and they have that 15 minutes of exposure, then that's where the 15 minutes comes in. So maybe John and I are, you know, tablemates, and I have a tendency to pull my mask down. Even if I don't pull my mask down for that full 15 minutes, I am not consistently and properly wearing my mask in the classroom setting. And the state clearly says that quarantine, the exclusion from quarantine, is dependent upon that. The other part that we have to think about is, in the classroom, we are often depending on teachers to be able to tell us who's wearing the mask properly. Our teachers need to be able to focus on their job, which is teaching students. So there's a limited ability for them to be able to calculate time. Anytime that videos can be pulled, administrators are doing a great job with buses and cafeterias and looking at that and truly timing it. But in the classroom, sometimes you have to take the big picture into consideration, and there may not be a timestamp on it. But everybody is working together to make sure that we're not excluding children who should not be excluded. So if a child is consistently and properly wearing their mask, that means their nose and their mouth are consistently covered, they can be excluded from quarantine.
So Tammy, I'm going to keep you for just another question, if you are good, Ms. Blackwell.
Yes.
Okay. So that was perfect timing. And what we, that has been one of our greatest messages that we wanted everybody to hear, is that our school nurses were in desperate need of help. And that's because the school nurses' duties were being passed to the teachers. Teachers were becoming teachers slash nurses. You know, that's a very scary thing sometimes. So give us an update on what is going on with the nurses and the additional personnel or sources that y'all are providing.
Absolutely. So the ELC funds have allowed us to get support persons on campus. Cabarrus County Schools currently has 23 support staff who are, some being split between two schools. We've got a couple who are able to be devoted to one school. We've sent out a survey to get feedback from school administrators and school nurses to see how effective this program is. I looked at the survey before I came this afternoon, and overwhelmingly, administrators and school nurses had given it a five. So five was the highest that they could rate it, one was the lowest. Almost everybody had said five, a good handful of fours. There was one with a one, so we'll follow up on that. But they were trained to do administrative duties, so they can help with contact tracing, phone calls, letters, trying to alleviate some of the COVID work, to allow school nurses to get back to the important work that they do, but also alleviating some of the work that school staff are having to do. Because COVID is bringing on a workload that's more than one school nurse can handle in the school setting. So school nurses are relying heavily on school administrators and other staff to help with that. So now with the support staff, it's less likely that school admin and other school staff will have to make phone calls and that type of thing. Will they still be doing contact tracing? Ultimately, yes, because they are the ones who have access to videos and, you know, are able to go into the classroom to ask questions, and I think we probably get our best information through that. But the support staff have done a great job with alleviating some of that workload.
That is great, because we definitely need our teachers' teaching, for sure. I know the heavy lift that they've had to have has been very cumbersome. You know, that's been passed along, and I'm sure the inability to be able to pass down to the nurse if something else is going on that's really outside their wheelhouse is a big effort on our end. So tell me, I know you said 23, so that, and I know your goal is to have one in every, give us a timeline, what are you thinking as far as, I mean, and I know that's a lot of shortage of staff issues, but what are you seeing, and how long do you think that would take?
So I know part of the survey that we've done for principals is to specifically ask them, before we assign one to every school, do you want this person? So what we want to make sure is that they're, that they're going to, that they're getting a staff member, that they truly want one per school. So I think we have to first get the results of that before we can say what that timeline is. I know earlier when you asked me, I gave you an estimate that our goal would be to do this by October 1st to create some relief. I'd still like to see that, I just don't know about how deliverable that is at this moment.
I can't imagine, with our kids being back 100%, that those principals would not welcome with open arms additional staff or sources.
Yeah, and that's why we felt like we needed to go ahead and get that poll out, you know, it's, you're 30 days in, trying to settle in, you know, would it be helpful or more cumbersome to have someone full-time? Because as John said, we didn't want to assign somebody full-time if they truly weren't needed and desired. So the preliminary results came in, which Tammy just referenced. We got a few reminders, a few nudges to folks to answer the survey, we know they have a ton going on. But we already have some additional staff in the pipeline going through the process to come onboard. We just need to know, you know, where to go, how many that's going to be. So I do want to stop and just give huge kudos to your IT team. You know, we found out notice of award October 25th for these dollars. August, what did I say? October, no, we're not there yet. August 25th for these funds, and by mid-September, you know, you had 23 support people, and your IT folks were amazing at getting them access to all the necessary programs, so that they could be an asset, and they weren't having to rely too much on the school nurse for every step that they made. So we're moving as fast as we can, your staff are moving as fast as you can. So we'll have a good update for you next meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Fur?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask one quick question, and, you know, it's real obvious that each one of y'all have stated how important it is to have our kids in school. We all know that, we know that virtual school didn't work. But when we heard the numbers earlier, we're 85%, I think, of the kids that were in quarantine last week are not, didn't test positive. So they were at home. What's the suggestion? What can we do to keep those kids in school?
Yep, so, you know, you have three quarantine options. You've got 14 days, which if you'll remember back to March 2020, everything was about 14 days, everything was about 14 days. Then it was down to 10 days. And then CDC came out and said, you know what, you have this, test on day five, you can come back after day seven. And so, you know, we have always allowed that most liberal quarantine policy. And if we were able to, you know, bring students back in a different way that isn't going to land with guidance from DHHS saying, you can't do that, Cabarrus County Board of Education, then, you know, we would like to explore that. We know that there are studies going on all over the world on how to minimize that five days, or eight days, even more. But right now, you know, that's the best we can do. But back to Ms. Blackwell's point, you know, I think your staff are getting, you know, really good at narrowing in on who truly needs to be excluded. And if you go back to the other chart, you know, I think that's why you see that downward slope, is because not only are our positive cases going down, which inevitably leads to less close contacts, but your staff are always getting better and better at figuring out, how can we space these kids out? You know, how can we truly see if they met that definition of a close contact? So, you know, they're doing a great job, and if we have the allowance and we have that leniency, then, you know, we will work with you to do just that.
Okay, I'm going to go one more round, and I'm going to start with Ms. Adcock. Any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions.
Ms. Carpenter?
This is, wait a minute, yeah, this is kind of in the same vein, because it works. All right, the $64 million question. All right, when do we think we will get the vaccination for our five-to-12-year-olds? And then second part of it is, when do we think we get the booster for the Moderna and the other ones?
All right, well, so we'll talk boosters first, because I think that's easier to navigate. So right now, it's just Pfizer. So Pfizer boosters, if you're Moderna, J&amp;J, there is no booster, so don't go looking for it, for those who are 65 and older or other high-risk occupations. So all of that is laid out. We've got a press release going out as well about that. So Moderna boosters, we do feel like will be sometime in the next eight weeks or so. So we're just waiting on that information. You know, it has to go through the process through multiple boards, but we do think both Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson will follow suit with some sort of booster. For our five-to-11-year-olds, we're also anxiously awaiting that. I'm really anxiously awaiting that with two that are in that age category. And so I would anticipate we would know something by the end of this calendar year. So there's a lot of moving parts with boosters, and then continued research.
Do you think it will be that long? I mean, I'm sure sooner than that. My parents, we have heard, I mean, they were really anxious about that, and I think that's one of the key things, vaccinations. So many of us, a lot of people are looking at here, we remember the sugar pill, we remember our vaccinations on our arms, or so many of these. And I would really feel besides the mask, washing of the hands, so many precautions.
Yeah.
And I think that, and I know a lot of the parents have said that, but I think that may be a big sign for that.
Yeah, I would hope earlier as well, but again, there's a lot of competing priorities right now with boosters for those who have already gotten it, and then expanding to the five-to-11-year-olds, as well as how much surge can you put on a vaccine provider? So we're really lucky that Atrium still provides vaccines. We are, a lot of independent pharmacies, Moose and Canon, those sort of folks, so we certainly have a lot of access points. So, but to your point, yes, we also feel like, you know, we need to get our percentage of students who are vaccinated, who are currently eligible in the 12 to 17 population, up as well. So any help you can do with helping to encourage those students to increase...
What is our percentage now for our students?
I didn't, I've not looked at that today, so let me get the most recent for you, and I will send that back through Dr. Kapiky to send to you for our 12 to 17-year-olds.
And again, I want as honorable members of Blackstone, y'all, here for being here and doing what I... what y'all have done with this. I am really, really appreciative of all the work that you've done and you were here for everything you did working with us. We appreciate you so much.
Mr. Fur. Mr. Walter.
Again, a lot of parents out there asking about when this, looking for something that says, hey, at some point there should be vash optional. And there's some, we're looking for some guidance to help us make that kind of a decision. So hopefully you all participate in our task force, is that correct?
Tammy is a sitting member and so...
Erin, I'm going to take you off the hot seat right there.
Okay.
So, Mr. Walter, Dr. Kapicki will be giving us an update on the task force that's actually got a planned meeting and yes, y'all are a part of it. We know that you are and you may not have even received that email as of yet, but you will.
All right, that's excellent news and I appreciate that. And again, thank you for coming tonight.
Ms. Blackwell.
Okay, I'm so sorry. Like I have one more question that I just know that a lot of people have this very same question and concern. With the vaccinations of some of the kids that are able to get the vaccine, so ages 12 to 17 at this point. I have heard scenarios and the way that it works right now is that if you have been vaccinated, even though you may not have worn the mask consistently and property, properly as you said, that as long as you are vaccinated, that you will not have to quarantine. My question about that is if the vaccines do not prevent you from getting the virus or spreading the virus, are we creating another problem by not having these children that could have also potentially been exposed to it even though they're vaccinated not quarantined?
So let me talk just logistically. So you are correct, anyone who is fully vaccinated and not showing symptoms. So I think that's a key piece that sometimes gets left off. If I'm fully vaccinated but, and I'm, I know I'm exposed and then I start feeling bad, you know, I need to, I need to quarantine myself, I need to get tested. And so same with our students. So a student who is fully quarantined but exposed does not have to, I'm sorry, a student who's fully vaccinated but is exposed does not have to quarantine. So I'll let our medical experts pick up the second part of that question.
So I think it's a very good question, very good question, especially for just, you know, from parents that don't know, don't follow the research, don't look at the new statistics. Now, if I tell you 100% that I'm sure that kids that are vaccinated don't need to be quarantined, I can't, I wouldn't be able to tell you that truthfully. Because we do know that research studies, this is an evolving problem. So we're going to have new research, just like you brought, the CDC saying that everybody that was, you know, death by COVID wasn't COVID. It's going to continue to evolve. And we do know now that some of the evidence shows that when you get vaccinated, you can still, hence, that's why everybody's back on masks, no matter if you have vaccines, you can still be a vector or carrier to spread the virus. You might not get sick, you might not get symptoms, but you can still get sick. Now what the studies are showing right now is that people that are vaccinated tends to not get as sick as the other one. Has there been any death? Yeah, they have documented some death of somebody who had other secondary problems because they had other diseases, underlying diseases, and they have died even though they had the vaccine, they got COVID, they got really sick and died. Now, in children, there hasn't been that much of that yet that we have seen because again, we are not vaccinating all the kids that are in school unfortunately. And the ones that are allowed, a lot of parents are still scared to get it. Now, do we think there is a harm? Well, in 10 years, I could tell you, right now, we haven't seen anything immediate, like we have seen with other vaccines. When they started the HPV vaccine, we saw that there was kids that were having some other problems with gastric viruses that we had. You know, we had seen problems with this, we haven't seen it yet. But we do know that the studies are showing that you have a better chance to not get as sick as if you did not get vaccinated.
Thank you. And I truly want to tell you, thank you so much for coming tonight too and answering all of these hard questions. And I ask them because these are the questions that we have out there and this is a centralized good spot for everybody to kind of hear this all at one time. So I am truly grateful for you guys coming out tonight and speaking to us, so thank you.
And I do thank you that you ask the questions that you hear from the parents because I want to be able to get that information. We want to be able to get that information from you to the other people. Again, one person cannot do it all, so we have to do it all together.
That's all right, thank you.
Ms. Sandage.
I'm sorry, that's to add, Ms. Blackwell, you had the question about children who are fully vaccinated and then not quarantining. We have asked our middle and high school nurses to educate parents. So your child was identified as a close contact, they're not required to quarantine, but the CDC does recommend that they be tested in three to five days from the exposure. It's not a requirement, but we provide that education and that recommendation. And the reason for that would to be to try to catch any asymptomatic positives. So that's just another mitigation strategy that's in place.
So just two questions. One, I wanted to clarify with you. You said earlier that the folks who have had COVID and have not been vaccinated maybe have a better chance, or there is some idea that those folks don't have to worry about getting COVID again or getting sick again? And that kind of to me, or possibly to other people, could suggest that if you've had COVID before, you don't need to get a vaccine?
Well, I can't say that because in medicine, there's research evidence that comes out. The research evidence gets passed around and talked about and when it's accepted, the larger bodies of authority in the country adopt it. Like in OB-GYN, American College of OB-GYN will adopt certain policies based upon research evidence when it gets to be strikingly convincing that it's accurate and true and carries the weight of evidence to make changes in policy. And so I don't, I didn't say that tonight for, to change policy. I know that there's still, in general, the perception that the vaccine creates a better immune response than the wild virus and getting the infection itself. And I think you're going to see a lot of, this is, as Dr. Torres has been saying, it's an evolving process. And I think we're going to see a discussion of that Israeli study in comparison to a study that was done in the US that showed different findings and try to figure out which one is accurate. But usually that means they got to do another study with better controls. And again, that's time, it takes time. But I was reassured when I saw that the father of viral, of the mRNA technology for vaccines, which is what's being used for COVID, came out and he felt like that the Israeli study was accurate.
So the intent was not to say that if you've had COVID, you shouldn't go get vaccinated?
No, no. I know that goes against policy right now. Policy may change, but...
Anything I may add, I think there's some studies out there as well that have shown that if you have, and I tell this to my patients, if you have had COVID, like many other illnesses, you didn't get vaccinated, you can still get it again. Now, they've seen that the people, the population that are vaccinated tends to have a better immunity against it than just having the COVID. So we still encourage people, even if you had the disease, when you recover, please have the vaccine because you're still creating a better immunity than if you just had the disease by itself. And that's, again, studies as of now. It might change tomorrow, like everything changed, but that's what we know now.
And right now, while we're contact tracing, we're asking our students, have you had COVID in the last 90 days? And so if they do, then they also do not have to quarantine. So it's a period of time and it's always changing.
And based on what you have been reading and studying in the toolkit, would you say that our district is following what you're reading as well as it relates to implementing what's stated in the toolkit? That's one, there's a second part to that question, I'm sorry. And then if we get questions that are medical questions in nature that we truly can't answer because we aren't the professionals, is that number that you gave earlier a number that parents can call? Or we can direct them? Like they email us the question, we can direct them to, okay?
Yep, they can call that number, you can gather them, you can email them directly to me through Dr. Kapicki. However, we'll be happy to try to answer this as possible.
Okay.
And I would say, Ms. Sandage, that your board and your leaders for the school system have done a wonderful job in working directly with Cabarrus Health Alliance. You know, every time there's an update in the Strong Schools Toolkit, we evaluate, evaluate what those changes are and make sure we implement those. I feel very, very confident in saying, yes, we are following the strategies that are in the toolkit.
Okay, so I have just a couple of random questions because guess whose phones gets blown up during meetings when people are listening, which I'm so glad, I'm glad to be able to get some of these questions out and answered and take care of them immediately. So there's a question about, do you feel like if there was one of the respiratory therapists, they would have any other recommendations or they would have another version about mask wearing? Do you think one of your peers from respiratory would have a different opinion? Is that something that we could get a weigh-in on? Erin, I know that's a heavy lift question, but...
Yeah, I mean, I think obviously, you know, we would work with our partners at Atrium Health, so we could work with Asha Rodriguez to see if one of their respiratory therapists could come and answer similar, different questions that you're getting.
That would be great.
But I think we'd prefer for them to answer from their direct experience.
Absolutely, and I think that would be beneficial. I think some are recognizing that hearing from maybe one of the respiratory professionals might be beneficial as well, just to get, you know, that opinion. And then also, this is probably for you, since you are the pediatrician on site, what recommendations are you giving to kids that are having like really bad outbreaks with acne and, you know, certain types of facial issues with...
And that is, that is true. That's something we're seeing with anybody because you're wearing this so often, even colleagues that never had any acne, they're having rashes on the face. To tell the truth, just I tell them, you have to take care of your, you know, your skin well, wash it. And if they need, you know, any medications, I try to make sure that they're doing it. If they do follow those things and they take care of their skin, they usually do fairly well, I have to say. I have a 20-year-old who doesn't and when he gets it, then he does it and it goes away and he comes back. So the masks, yes, are causing a little bit, but the skin is also getting more used to it. I remember when I was wearing the N95 together with this and another one, I felt like I was going to die, just like Dr. Suda said. But then you get used to things, everybody gets used to things. But just taking care of your, you know, your skin and making sure you reach out to your physician, to your PCP and ask him for any kind of guidance on what to do for your acne. Because it does get worse if you don't take care of it too.
Thank you. And then one last question, and I'm not sure who this will be appropriate. What, when, where is it feasible that antibodies are checked? If that's a time-sensitive issue to get a test back? Is there a time when a patient may have been positive so you know the possibility of antibodies being there to see if the immune system has checked in? And maybe that would give us a better idea of how to get kids back in school quicker, faster? Is that an option?
I, I mean, in my opinion and from what I know right now, it's, I have only tested a couple of my patients for that antibody. And those are kids that came in three months after, never came for acute infection, and they're coming in now three months after with loss of smell or taste that hasn't come back. Then I know my rapid and my PCR are not going to be what I'm looking for, I'm looking if they have the antibodies and they've been positive. Now, in testing for that in terms of return, first is more invasive because it's blood, I have to draw blood, which a lot of kids don't like and the parents don't either. And second, we don't know yet what that's going to help us with because she was still having the loss of, you know, smell and taste. Now, I don't think she was contagious, do I know for sure? But she's not having any other symptoms. Now, I only did that to confirm that that was the diagnosis instead of going on a wild chase and finding there was something else wrong with her. I don't think it has a use yet in terms of returning to school. We don't know how fast the antibodies are made or what are the titers that I'm going to get. In her case, it was positive because she had, you know, with the symptom for three months.
That was a great answer, thank you. Okay, Erin, do you have anything else? Did we pretty much cover that list of questions?
You've got most of them, I think that's probably good for tonight. The last one, there we go. The last one was just what are we doing to prepare for winter? You know, we're going into this winter season, the same as we went into last season and we're going into any other season. Stay home if you're not feeling well, wash those hands, get your flu vaccine and, you know, get your COVID vaccine. So, miss any other preparing for winter guidance?
And just to add to that, to Ms. Blackwell, I do think that many, in the past, many offices, providers' offices, they were basing treatment for flu on symptoms because we knew that sometimes there was a false positive or false negative, excuse me, on the rapid one and you still were so sure that this was definitely flu. I think a lot of people preparing for this winter are actually buying those flu tests to do it in the office. So that's a change that has come, that's why it's, you know, we're still on a waiting list to get them. So that is definitely a change that you're seeing more across with a lot of the provider offices, they're testing for more things.
We'll queue off of that one. If they're going to do that, which is great, and they're testing on-site, if so, if they were flu-positive, would the scenario be that they would be treated just for flu or would they automatically get a COVID test as well? That, that's the first question.
Of course, let me not talk anymore. But I do think that you still have to test for COVID because COVID is one of those master of many things. We don't know everything that COVID looks like right now. There were some of the documentation that says some kids just presented with a rash and a sore throat. Well, that's what strep looks like too so many times. So we do still have to be, have our guard up and test for that as well.
Thank you, that was great. So we want to say thank you tonight for being here. This has been very informative. I think there's a lot of good information that's went out and a lot of clarification on some confusion out there. We would like to invite you back each month since it's the mandate that, I know, Erin, just, you just love that, right? But I think it's really important that the general public hears this information. They can watch this over and over, you know, it's played on Channel 21 so they can view it at their leisure. I think it's really important to update the community and get the questions out there and, you know, just to make a really good run at this every month so that we can update them with the numbers. They're just as curious about what the positivity, you know, people are talking the language now. You know, they know what the positivity rate means, they know what to look for, they, you know, the terminology is out there. So I think just getting updates each month would be very helpful and we appreciate you being here.
And just to, just to end, and I'm not going to add too much information just in case, I think we also have to realize how much is impacting our children. Because I had a kid who was only eight today who came in with family and when this patient tested positive, this patient couldn't stop crying because this patient thought she was going to die. So kids are also in a lot of stress with this infect, because they don't know, they hear everything from parents, from friends. And so we have to be aware that this is causing a lot of mental health, you know, instability in kids that never had any issues. So we have to be very sensitive to that as well.
Well, you know, we've made the statement, kids are impacted greatly. You know, they don't want to be a part of this fight. You know, it's become a different situation and a different environment of mask, don't mask, vaccinate, don't vaccinate. And all these kids are absorbing all this information and they don't want to be, they just want to be in school. You know, that's just, they just want to be in school. So we appreciate it, thank you for being here. Thank you, Erin. We'll see you next month.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Dr. Kapicki, if you could step to the podium and we will begin with the part of the discussions on virtual learning. And I think that was a perfect segue into the meeting that you have scheduled with the task force.
Right, so to update the board, first I'd like to, I would like to thank Ms. Shu, Ms. Alexander, Dr. Torres and Dr. Sudo for coming this evening. I'd also like to commend the board for calling this meeting this evening to kind of clarify some of the communications and have the questions asked so that our public understands kind of what we're doing with, with the situation and getting our kids back in school. And to just have the Q and A that you engaged in this evening, I think was very productive and I appreciate the time you took to have this meeting this evening and discuss those issues with our public. The, the task force is going to meet at 3:30 this, this Thursday. I've received quite a bit of response to that invite already today. I would say that the majority of the task force members are going to be at that meeting. And we will take note of anyone that does not and make sure we follow up with a communication to those folks to meet with them at another time if necessary. We're going to talk about the virtual learning options that are available right now, talk about the Canvas options that are available, the 10 hours of tutoring support that is available at each school, and see if there's anything that we can do to improve upon some of the delivery systems that we're engaged in right now in terms of how kids are learning when they are quarantined and when they're out of school. I think we're doing a good job, but we want to talk with the task force and others to make sure that if there are other options or ideas out there that can improve upon that virtual learning, that we can engage in that conversation and see if we can improve upon those practices.
Great, and just on behalf of one of the questions, Mr. Walter, I know that one of the tasks, that the metrics portion of the task force that has already met and discussed numbers, part of the processes, I think, you know, I've had a couple of questions, well, why the task force? They did their job last year, we'll know, they really are more important this year than they were last year because this year we have 100% of our kids back in school, things look differently, you know, there's lots of changes. But I think it's really important that we get direction from them and get some parameters set in place. That helped guide last year and I think it'll do a good job this year.
So in our intent is to meet with them monthly from this time forward as I get acclimated acclimated and kind of situated here in the county, this will be our first meeting for this school year. We will then meet monthly thereafter and report out to the board at each board meeting what the task force recommendations are, what the reports are. So we'll have a monthly report to the board on the task force meetings.
So board members, an opportunity to ask Dr. Kapicki any questions or add comment. Ms. Sandage, I'll start with you.
I don't have any questions, I'll be present.
Ms. Blackwell.
I would love to get with you, I probably can't come to the task force meeting, but I would love to get with you and give you my experience with the virtual learning while out on quarantine for a little one that I know, so.
I will make sure that we reach out to you tomorrow, Ms. Sarah will give you a call, we'll set something up. Thank you.
Mr. Walter.
And like it was said earlier, the Cabarrus Health Alliance is part of your task force, is that correct?
There are people from the Cabarrus Health Alliance that are on the task force, that is accurate.
Okay, and then you're going to be giving us a recommendation before we vote next time?
A recommendation I'm asking?
Yes.
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Furr.
No questions.
Ms. Carpenter.
And, recommendation, that would give us the metrics on where they prefer the positivity rate to be, or is that going to be considered in there?
So we do have a chart that I will work with Susan Burns to discuss the update on the metric recommendations from the task force, so we do have that, we can discuss that as well, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Adcock.
No comments or questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Board members, we will move on to the amended agenda item, which will be now 8.01, that is the administrative recommendation. So may I have a motion that the September 27, 2021 administrative recommendation be approved as presented in closed session?
I'd make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Walter, second by Mr. Furr, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Furr, and a second by Ms. Blackwell, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and with that, we will say goodnight to our viewing audience, thank you for being with us tonight. We hope that this was very informative, and we will see you at our work session scheduled for Monday, October the 4th. Good night.